For January 25th to order. Janet, can we start with roll call, please?
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Kevin Boils.
Here.
Tom Hagland.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
Jana Shogren.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting, our regular school board meeting. I do need to make an announcement because of COVID-19. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay-at-Home and Guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Brainerd School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021, meetings by telephone or other electric means. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location by watching on YouTube Live. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as is reasonably possible. Next, we'll move to the approval of the agenda as amended. And hopefully, you've had a chance to see that.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Shogren to, for the approval of the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes. Next, we'll go to Superintendent Larson for district recognitions.
Thank you, Chair Nystrom. Under district recognitions tonight, I want to begin by congratulating the Minnesota State High School League Excel Award winners Eden Exstrand and Taylor Rule. This award goes to juniors who demonstrate excellence in community, education, and leadership. Congratulations to those students. Also, it's really fun in the agenda tonight to welcome back all of our early childhood through grade-two students. As you all know, our students returned to learn last Tuesday morning. And so, I wanted to take this time to thank our staff, our administration, our families, everyone for partnering to make this return to learn really a wonderful memory for all of our students and for our staff as well. Distance learning was hard for everyone, and it's really fun to see the kids coming back. And as we're going to have a short report in a little bit, we're going to have a few more kids coming back next week, and hopefully, by the middle of February, we're going to have them all coming back. So, I think the most fun part of this for me is that it's like the first day of school all over again for the second time this school year. So, we're just thrilled to have our kids back. So, that ends my recognitions.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Next, we will go to public input. Is Cory? Oh. Anything Cory?
One moment.
Okay.
ISD 181 School Board. My name is Robyn Heron, a parent of students in the lakes, in the Brainerd Lakes area. I'm writing in hope that the board would take into consideration a possible project in the building of a dome for our winter sports athletes. It would be a great benefit to our athletes in our area for expanding their athletic abilities and to expand the opportunity to bring other schools here to compete. As of right now, they have to travel to other towns. I would greatly appreciate your consideration for this project. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Robyn Heron.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Any others?
No.
Okay. Thank you Cory. Next, we'll go on to approval of minutes. We'll start with a special organizational meeting on January 11th.
So moved.
I'll second that one.
Okay. We have a motion by Director Hagland, second by Director Boils, to approve the minutes of the special organizational meeting on January 11th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Next, we will look to approve the regular school board meeting from January 11th, the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Nelson, second by Director Hagland, to approve the minutes from the regular school board meeting on January 11th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Next, we'll vote on the consent calendar that you should have in your packet, and also, presentation of additional bills for payment.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Director Hagland, second by Director Shogren, to approve the consent calendar with the additional payments. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes unanimously. Next, we will have our COVID-19 update presentation. We have Angie Hamilton, Angie Bennett, Heidi Hahn, and Lane Larson. Is Heidi here tonight?
Nope, she's not.
Oh, okay.
So, it'll just be mostly those two and a little bit of me.
Oh, okay.
So, just have a little update here. So, these are the data points that we are still reviewing. So, as of today, the Crow Wing County case count per 10,000, on the 21st was reported at 36.18, so we're still seeing a decline. We're looking at projecting the low 30s again this week. So, it's still going in the downwards motion. We've also seen a decrease in the amount of staff and students positives in quarantines. At the end of last year, we had this number sometimes up in the triple digits. So, now, as of today, we have six staff that are quarantined, and since the first, we've had nine positive staff members. Students, we are getting some reports on students now that school's back in session. So, as of today, we had 25 students quarantined with 13 positives. Bi-monthly updates, Superintendent Larson's going to send out one on, on the 5th. And then, that'll be prior to the next learning model transition on February, for February 16th. We have some updates to the Safe Learning Plan. And we did compete, or complete our first testing onsite. That was competed, or completed last week on Thursday. We had a really good turnout, and our next one will be done on February 2nd. Vaccination schedule, that has been changed since the last week. And we'll kind of talk about, more about the vaccination coming up here. So, last Monday, we were formed of a pilot program that's being done by the state. We were limited very amount of doses that were allocated to us, less than 20. So, those people were notified and were able to go and get those vaccines. But then throughout the week, we found out Guidepoint, Essentia, and local public health have really worked hard to get our staff vaccinated. And we continue to be in contact with them daily. We, as soon as we get any information, we send it out. Testing, the first round of voluntary was completed. We'll complete another one on the second, and it went well with no concerns or issues. And here is the graph that we continue to show, and we can see the decline's still going down. Some of the students that returned last week. So, then I'll let Superintendent Larson talk about the learning plan.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah. Last Sunday night, we received a call that there was going to be a, an embargoed call at 8:00 in the morning on Monday morning to let us know that there was a change. MDE was talking to us, and there was going to be an announcement at 2:00. But the story got broken a little bit early. But the story was that they were developing pilots throughout the state to be able to vaccinate educators and starting to prioritize people in education and in early childhood, daycares, those types of areas. And as Angie said, we got our number, and we had 19 openings, and our staff had to go to Fergus Falls in order to, to have these vaccinations. And both of the series of vaccinations would be in Fergus Falls. But we were grateful that there were, there were some that were being put aside for our staff and that we were going to be able to move in that direction. Angie and Angie, Heidi, the whole team worked very closely to put a survey together to start prioritizing our staff as to who has direct contact with children, who is 65 and above, who might have some health conditions that would be affected and so on. And people could voluntarily apply for that, to, to be on that list and to be prioritized in order to get vaccinations. But we saw that as the first step, that, that they were working towards prioritizing education to make sure that this is happening for, for us when we returned. Now, last night, we got another call that said, please be at your computer. There's embargoed information this morning at 8:00. And we found out that we are getting some additional spots. And so, we just haven't heard what our number is, but we're guessing it's about the same amount. If I remember correctly, in greater Minnesota, the seven pilots at 6,000, right, that are divided between those schools. So, we're anticipating about 19 more. But we were really blessed this week in that actually Ruth got a call, and she contacted me to let me know that Guidepoint, along in partnership with Essentia Health and Crow Wing County Public Health, had the ability to get a significant amount of vaccine for, for our staff in our school district. And fortunately, we had less people that were on our list than that were on it. And we sent out an email, and all of the appointments were closed within minutes. The following morning, I was on my way to work, I got telephone call from Mike again. Forgot his last name.
Schwartz.
Schwartz, he's a cop. Anyway, and his wife, Laura, and they had 120 more doses. And so, we sent that out, and within 20 minutes, once again, they filled up. Now, they didn't get quite as many as they were anticipating, but for the most part, our staff had been very thrilled because between Friday and Tuesday, this week, a significant amount of people were able to get the first dose of the vaccine. So, thank you for that connection, and we know it's not perfect, but we're excited again today when we had 19 more opportunities. And everyone I talked to throughout the district, or throughout the community says, you know, we're really prioritizing our school personnel because we want schools to be reinstated. We want our kids to be able to come to schools. And so, it really has been a beautiful community partnership. Not perfect, and not everybody's vaccinated, but we are so much better off today than we were a week ago at this time. And so, we are thrilled that our kindergarten through grade-two students came back. And as you can tell on the screen, we, and from the letter that I sent out on Friday, we are eagerly anticipating that our third and fourth graders will be back on February 1st. They will be back five days a week in an in-person learning model. Again, they will have the same schedule that our other element, that our early childhood to second grade has. Mitigation strategies, we're able to implement all of them, and we're just very excited about that. Now, our fifth grade is a little bit different. We were not able to get approval for the in-person, but it's like a modified in-person, also known to, but it's called a hybrid. And all of our kids are able to come back. We do not have the large area on the every-other-day thing where kids go into the cafeteria and there's 200 kids or whatever. It's in smaller groups where students can have contact with their teachers at all times. So, we're thrilled to be having our fifth graders back on Monday as well. And thanks to John and his team for, for really making sure that, that we're ready to go on, on February 1st. Also, on Monday, the 1st, we're going to be bringing back our students at the Lincoln Education Center, the students in our Transitions Program, which is our setting for students, the Stars Program, and also the Brainerd Learning Center. They will be returning to a modified in-person learning model as well. And as the letter said, we have permission that far that everything that we have planned for is a go as of next Monday. Right now, all we have permission for our sixth through our 12th graders is to bring those students back into a hybrid model, which is an A-B schedule. So, they'll come two days and have distance learning three days a week on the A-B. So, either Monday, let's see if I got this right, Monday, Tuesday with Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Thursday, Friday with Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But, as you saw in the letter, and you also see in the bright yellow that's on this screen, I guess we don't see it up there, but it is down here, we are watching really carefully because, once again, our numbers are going down, and we are using county numbers right now. If they continue to go down, we're hoping that we can get permission for some kind of a modified in-person learning. But at this point, our plan is that we'll be back in a hybrid on the 16th of February, and all of our kids will be back in school, connecting with their teachers at least two days per week as we move forward. So, we're going in the right direction, and we're just really excited about that.
So, if we did get permission for the modified in-person, would we still be able to do the February 16th?
Modified in-person, yes, we would, only it would be four days a week with, on the modified schedule. So, it'd be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday would be distance learning because our teachers still have to do the distance learning cohorts.
So, that plan is already in place, and we're set to go?
It's in place if we can get that permission. But right now, all we have is the A-B hybrid model that's been approved by the state. But they've been really good about working with us, our regional teams, our county teams. Just been phenomenal to work with our school district through this, so. But that's our plan, so. So, the 5th will have another update.
And one other question too, and that's regarding FIAID. Fifth, fifth through 12th do have FIAID classes still, correct? Kindergarten through 4th, do they have just outside recess?
Yeah, they can go outside and have their recess when they're outside, or they can have inside in the gymnasium to take some time or whatever, but it's not a-
But they don't have the formal FIAID programs?
Correct.
As of now, because we don't have the space for that?
Right, or the staff, right. Same with music.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Quick question on the testing, and probably a hip of preventing answer, but do we have a sense of how many of our staff roughly have received that first dose of?
Of the vaccine? We don't. The way that it's working is like Superintendent Larson said, we sent out that Google survey with their, and then they send back their information. And from there, I forward everything to Essentia, and then Essentia puts that into their database. And then, from there, I don't have any idea of who they've contacted, who's gotten the vaccine, who's even on the list. So, what we're hoping is when we find out what we have allocated, we're going to do some, probably send out another survey for those that have already received it to, so they don't apply, and so we can figure out who still is on that list to send for this next dose that is allocated for us.
Thank you.
Do we know how many at Guidepoint though? I mean, are they able to tell us how many appointments were utilized? They can't even tell us that.
No, they kept throughout the day, that morning, we'd received another 100 and some. And then, I actually was in contact with them, and we received, I think it was another 20 to 50. So, we just continue to send the information out, and those appointments are being taken very, very quickly. So, you know, we just keep working and taking what we can.
And it's really, so, I think the part that was most heartwarming for me when Mike and Laura had called me is how our whole community is working together to take care of our school. You know, Essentia has been awesome, Crow Wing County Public Health has been awesome. You know, Guidepoint got this information. Bob, I know you've talked about Thrifty and such as well. And everybody's just really working hard to take care of us so that our kids can be in school and so that our teachers feel safe. And I don't know, that, that to me has just really been the beautiful part of this.
How did the K-2 staff handle it last week? Is their spirit high?
Spirits are really high, yeah.
Well, that's good to hear.
The kids are just, yeah. I heard more families say that their kids had to put out their clothes the night before, and they had all this, just like the first day of school, and so. And so, we said, we kind of missed our, we missed our call last Tuesday of not having board members at all the, at the schools. So, next Monday, we're going to do that again. We're gonna, we're gonna welcome the kids back when they come, and, and that's always a fun thing, I know, for all of you, and it's really fun for them as well. And so, we're not going to miss it two times, so. So, anyway, but, yeah, we didn't realize how exciting it was going to be and how the kids and everybody was going to react to it, but it was just really a fun experience.
Well, the nice thing is with the rolling start, we can get to all the schools.
Yeah.
Yeah, be able to get to the high school when they open and.
Yep, that's right. And then, the 16th will do the same for Forest View for the sixth through eighth graders, and then the high school for, yeah. Good.
Any questions, board members? Any other questions? Anything else, Angie?
Nope, we'll just kind of, we know we're gonna meet, I think, again with our regional team here to talk about the return for the 6th, February 16th. So, if we have any other information, then we'll keep that going. Our fingers are crossed, though, that the numbers keep going down so that we can get the students back in person.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. And it looks like Marcy is going to introduce our speaker.
Yes. So, every two years, we have to have an actuarial evaluation done, and we just had one done. And Jill Erdahl is actually on the line. She's going to be walking us through this presentation. Are you there, Jill?
Yes, and I have my video on. Can you, can you see me, or can you just hear me? Is my speaker on okay?
Perfect.
You can see her up there.
Oh, great. Yeah. You know, for our new board members, could you explain, Gatsby, you know, the accounting, just a brief? I know it's, maybe you guys already know what that is.
Yeah, so, yeah, thanks. I'm, yeah, I'm Jill Erdahl, and I'm an actuary at Hildy Incorporated, and we're now a division of USI Consulting Group. And so, your district works with an actuary because you offer post-employment benefits when your employees retire from your district. But we're not talking about the post-employment benefits that are state pension-related. So, we're not talking about TRA or para benefits, but mainly post-retirement medical, dental, and life benefits that are housed within all of your contract groups at the Brainerd School District. So, because each district has different, we call them OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits or Post-Retirement Medical Benefits, that's why you have to have your own kind of actuarial study done. You have your own set of liabilities, and of course, your own set of benefits then that will be due when your employees retire, if they're eligible to receive these. So, that's kind of the overview. We call them OPEBs for short, but it's mainly your liabilities that you have for post-retirement medical, dental, life benefits at your district.
Thank you.
And the one thing I was going to add is, two years ago, we actually had Gatsby 73 and Gatsby 74, 75. We've changed our contracts so that the post-retirement benefit isn't going into a 403B, it's going into an HRA. So, this time, it is just one report, and that was per recommendation from Jill at Hildy, so.
Yeah, and we'll discuss that a little bit again too when we get to the part of the presentation where we highlight that you have an OPEB trust in place with assets that back up these liabilities so that you can use those assets, you know, to pull benefits when they come due, when your employees retire in this OPEB area. So, Marcy, do you have the, do you have the presentation up on your screen there?
Yep, I have it up.
Okay, I, so, will I be able to see that? I can't see it right now, but I have, I have it on my screen, so I can kind of walk you through my pages and then just indicate to you what page I'm on, is that all right?
Yeah, if you just say next slide, I'll click.
Okay, yes, so let's go to the agenda page. And anybody that has questions, if you go through this, feel free to just shout out, and you can stop for any questions that you, along the way too, or you can wait until the end, and I can take some questions at the end. Either way, is just fine with me. So, yeah, feel free to just say stop, 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 and I can answer any questions that you have. So, today, I'll just give you an overview of what your OPEBs or your post-employment benefits are, post-retirement medical, dental, life at your district. And then, we'll talk about the kinds of, the style of the benefit. We do have a state statute on insurance continuation that mandates some of the post-employment benefits. And then, of course, you have direct subsidized benefits that we find within all of your contracts that we're valuing too. Now, we'll just give you a picture of what we do in the actuarial valuation process. And then, of course, we'll get to the good stuff. We'll talk about what your results are in this most recent valuation. And then, at the end, we'll just talk about a couple topics, highlights of things that you should know going forward and kind of the funded status of your OPEB position. So, with that then, Marcy, we can go to the next slide, or slide three. So, here again, is just a description of the benefits that you have at your district. So, again, in the, within the contracts, you'll find a post-retirement medical, dental, and life benefits. Mainly, your obligation is around your post-retirement medical benefits. All of your contract groups have a group of employees that could possibly grow into getting direct subsidized benefits when they retire, but there are sunset clauses like attached to all of those now. So, you can think of it as you'll have a group of, you know, people that will possibly have OPEB benefits when they retire, direct subsidized ones, but you'll have a group of people that will only have the access benefit under our Minnesota statute. So, what do I mean by direct subsidized OPEB benefit versus implicit? Well, again, due to our state statute on insurance continuation, and I've noted it here, 471.61, all public employees, when they retire from their entity in Minnesota, if they meet minimum eligibility requirements when they retire, they can stay on your medical and dental plans indefinitely. But the kicker is, they can stay on at the same group or blended premium rate that all of your active employees are paying. So, we all know as we age, our claim costs under medical tend to increase. So, to be able to stay on the plan but continue to pay the blended or the group rate is really a hidden subsidy or an implicit benefit. So, we value that because you're required to offer that to your early retirees and carry that. And then, we also value, though, of that monthly premium, how much do you directly pay or subsidize of that, and for how long? So, the direct subsidized portion that you pay and that access or implicit benefit are what forms your liability then at the Brainerd School District. Again, you do have, you know, higher date restrictions or sunset clauses on those direct subsidized benefits and all the contracts that are in place. And we're not valuing any access or implicit liability for you after Medicare eligibility or age 65. You do have some subsidized dental and life benefits that are paid to some of the administrators. So, between medical, dental, life, this is just an overview of the benefits that you have at the Brainerd School District. Marcy has the full report. So, if any of you are having trouble falling asleep at night, you can flip through the full report and all the details, and they're all housed there. But we thought we'd be not mean to you and put all the details in front of you this evening. But if you have any questions, or if you want to look into more of the details, please feel free to ask either of us. So, another highlight we thought you'd be interested in is that in this most recent study, we looked at 886 active participants at your district, 88 retirees also are on your medical plan. And here to highlight, of the 886 active participants, 401 of those active participants were hired before those higher date restrictions or sunset dates that I talked about. So, that will be a decreasing group, you know, as people retire and get their OPEB benefits. But we wanted to just highlight that here for you in the participant counts. Any questions at all on these benefits? So, Marcy, if there's no questions now, we can go to slide four. And actually, you can kind of skip to slide five. So, slides four, five, and six, I just put in here for you for a little bit of background information. When I talked about that implicit benefit due to our state statute on insurance continuation, sometimes if I were in the room with you, I might be getting some glassy looks. So, I like to put an example in here to help provide a little bit more of a clear picture of what that benefit is we're talking about. So, on slide five, here you can see that this is an example from your district's cost. So, an age 60-year-old retiree is running about $1,235 a month in medical claims. But if they want to stay on your plan, even if they weren't getting a part of that premium paid for directly by the district, they could stay on and pay that approximate $844 a month premium themselves. And you couldn't charge- And you couldn't charge them more than that, so you couldn't charge them what they're really running in claims. So really, they're getting that implicit or hidden benefit every month of the three hundred and ninety-one dollars. So we're mathematically valuing that, plus how much of the eight forty-four are they getting and for how long from you? And that's what then forms your liability at the district for OPEB benefits. Slide six is just another picture of that implicit benefit where it's developed in the royal blue area. In the slide is what we're valuing, and you can see again, it's that difference between what is the retiree actually running in costs or claims versus, you know, what are they paying in that premium, which is the flat line across there. So the area in the royal blue, early retiree labeled area there is that implicit or hidden subsidy benefit that we're valuing for you. The next slide then is, um, our picture of the whole process. So Marcy and her group work hard to get us all of your data census information in the district, so we not only have to look at who's currently retired, but all of you who are actively working, who will grow into these OPEB benefits at some point. We gather your asset, that OPEB trust value, and then, of course, we review all your contracts to pull out all the specific OPEB provisions that we need to value. So once we get all the input items, then we do our number crunching. And then, once we have all the results, then we come out with, um, what you have to include in your financial statements then for these OPEB disclosures. So on slide eight, now to the, to the results you've all been waiting for. As of July one twenty twenty, so the valuation was done for this recent school year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, your actual accrued liability is now nineteen point nine million. And everyone, I would want to know of that total, how much is implicit versus how much is direct subsidized? So you can see that the nineteen point nine in total of accrued liability, six point six of that is that implicit or hidden subsidy liability. So the remaining thirteen point three is your direct subsidized liability obligation. Uh, the accrued liability is what shows up in your financial statements. Um, we actuaries will always show you, though, too, what your present value benefits is. Um, I often hear board members refer to the accrued liability kind of as the ultimate liability. Uh, but we just want to point out that the accrued liability only represents what all of your, um, employees have put in service to date, to the valuation date towards their final OPEB liability. So your true OPEB liability for all of the participants that you sent to us in the data for this valuation is the twenty-eight point three million, but that includes expected future service yet that they haven't worked. So when we apportion that to the amount based on the service they've put in with you to date, that's the nineteen point nine million, and that's what Gatsby wants to see in your disclosure. And then the service cost is what your active employees are accruing this school year towards their future OPEB benefits. And it's the first piece in your expense development. And you get to take credit, though, for what you're gonna earn in your trust return against your expense. So your actual OPEB expense under Gatsby seventy-five in your financial statements is a little bit less than your accruals. And then most of you kind of want to know, well, what are we gonna pay this year in expected benefit payments? And that's about one point eight million. Now, a piece of that is the implicit. So if I give you the breakout on that, and then once I can, I'll give you the detail. So of the one point eight, in this school year, about one point three million of that is expected to be those direct subsidized benefits. So the premiums that you will pay to the retiree directly towards subsidized medical, dental coverage at the district. The remaining about five hundred thousand is that implicit payments. And those you don't make directly to the retiree, but you are paying those within your overall total healthcare cost at the district. So those are probably the most important numbers that we wanted to highlight and let you know. Now, for the good news on the next slide, slide nine. So again, I mentioned that you've got the nineteen point nine million of accrued liability. But as of July one twenty twenty, you also had twenty-one point nine million in your OPEB trust to help cover these liabilities and benefit payments as they come due. So you're at a very favorable funded position, a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent funded, um, assets over liabilities as of July one twenty twenty. Marcy and I have talked about this. You don't want to get too overfunded. So you have been withdrawing full benefit payments every year from the, which we would continue to recommend. So you're really in an enviable position at your district with your well-funded position, even though you do have a large, you know, OPEB obligation for a district your size, but you are well-funded, um, with this OPEB trust and monies that are available to pay these benefits as they come due. On slide ten, I just give you a little highlight. Under Gatsby seventy-five now, there's this new term called an actuarially determined contribution. And it's really just what is your funding policy for paying for these benefits when they come due? And again, you really don't have to pre-fund your trust anymore at this point because of your well-funded position. Um, and I've noted here at the bottom that your funded status is over a hundred and ten, a hundred percent at this point, or a hundred and ten percent specifically at July one twenty twenty. Now, as you do over the years on slide eleven, as you continue to pay for OPEB benefits from that trust, if you get to a point where you're not a hundred percent funded, there is a provision in the Minnesota statute for an annual amount that you can levy for to help pay for OPEB benefits. At the bottom of slide eleven here, I've noted that for the Brainerd School, this year, you're estimated to not be able to levy for any amount. But that's only because your OPEB trust is so well-funded. For example, if you would only have enough assets to cover about fifty percent of your OPEB liabilities at some point, then you could levy for about half of your OPEB payments in, in, in that current year, for example, because you've got sunset clauses on all these types of OPEB benefits within your contracts. But again, I highlight that that is out there too, as another kind of lever that you can use to pay for OPEB benefits as they come due. But you don't need to exercise this option because your trust fund is so well-funded at the, at, in the current time. So, but we do want you to know about this. Um, and as Marcy and I spoke about on the phone, we had to remind each other that this might not always be available, this OPEB levy, but they have, we haven't heard any rumblings that, um, gonna go away at least in the near future, but we want you to know that's out there also. Those were the highlights that I wanted to share with you on the, um, your OPEB trust and the liabilities and the overall description of your benefits. Do any of you have any questions?
Yeah, I do, Jill. So when the board authorized the funding of the trust back in oh-eight or oh-nine, it seemed like there was a sunset period of thirteen or fourteen years. Is that true and will that sunset in the next couple of years?
Now, when you say sunset, do you mean, so when you issued, um, uh, the OPEB bond to establish your OPEB trust, do you mean that there was a period of time where you're gonna be paying off that, the OPEB bond monies?
Yeah, it seemed like after thirteen years, it would change some way.
Well, right now, you know, you're making payments on the, the OPEB bonds that you issued to establish the OPEB trust. So Marcy may know when you'll be done with those payments.
Okay.
Marcy and I talked, if you continue to fully withdraw your annual benefit payments or about that one point eight million, you know, each year from your trust, your trust probably won't run out until, Marcy, remind me, was it two thousand thirty-eight, two thousand thirty-nine? The money's in the OPEB trust, but you may get done paying off, you know, the, um, your payments toward your, when you bonded for the OPEB levy monies well before that.
Okay.
And we just refunded those, and I'd have to look at the date, but it is further out than the thirteen years that was originally issued.
So as long as we are, um, good in how we spend the funds, this should go on in, into perpetuity. Right? As long as we don't overspend?
Yeah, now remember, yeah, remember that your present value benefits is higher, you know, than what you have in your trust right now. But what you have in your trust is greater than your accrued liability. So, right, if you, um, you know, you really would have, you wouldn't have enough to pay all OPEB benefits for those that you sent me for the study right now, uh, because the present value benefits, remember, was about twenty-eight million. But you've got that, you know, almost twenty-two million in the trust. So, so your answer is yes. I mean, you're in an enviable position, but I didn't want to, I, I didn't want to say yes fully because you're, you're covered on an accrued liability basis, but that only covers what people have worked to date with you, what they've kind of accrued. But yes, but you're gonna be earning interest on that trust too, so it kind of depends on, you know, what the interest earnings are, and it depends on what you, you know, decide to withdraw from that trust. But yes, you should be well-funded for many years.
Great news.
What I, what I, what I kind of remember is that we funded it enough to handle all of the contracted retirement health benefits. But those implicit will go on after that. And so
Correct.
Down the road, we won't have enough for the implicit.
Correct, but yeah, but you still will be in a enviable, well-funded position for many years.
Yeah.
And Marcy and I reviewed, again, kind of, you know, how, well, how we got to where we are today. So, um, you know, when you, when you receive, when you issued your OPEB bonds and received those monies, you pretty quickly kind of moved them, um, you know, into some equity exposure, or you moved them into the market, which that was really, um, you know, the first time you were kind of allowed to invest some of the monies, you know, in different asset classes other than what your general fund is allowed to do. So it was a kind of a perfect storm because when you were able to issue the OPEB bonds, the market was really down. So you quickly moved into some equity exposure and had some very good returns, and then for a number of years, didn't withdraw anything from the trust. So, you know, it was, it was as if you were continuing to kind of make some contributions, had great returns. Now, with any equity exposure, of course, that can always go the other way, anytime, as we've seen. But, you know, you, because of your well-funded status, you can weather some of that storm now, and you've got a, um, correct me if I'm wrong here, Marcy, too, but I think about a thirty percent, you know, equity exposure within, um, your asset classes in your trust. So it's tampered a little bit. You'll, you'll feel some volatility, but, um, you know, because of your well-funded status, you can take that. But that's a little bit of the history as to, um, how we got to this well-funded position today. But it was really because kind of you got the monies at a low point in the market, got some great returns, didn't make withdrawals right away in the early years, so, um, built up a, uh, you know, a well-funded position.
Yeah, we didn't start drawing down the implicit until just a couple of years ago. Prior to that, it was just the direct payments that we were drawing down, and then just per their recommendation that we were so well-funded, we started drawing down the implicit as well.
I had a quick question for Jill or Marcy. I think on the example, on the, the twelve hundred and some monthly expense that, um, Quick Math says that the district pays like thirty, thirty-five percent contribution. Is that kind of standard, normal? Do we know, or with other districts?
Oh, you mean, back on slide five? You mean, the?
Yeah, yep, yep, the month, I think it was like thirty, thirty-five percent, whatever the district contribution is. I was just curious if that is.
I don't think that that was.
Yeah, so you, so how much is that implicit? You mean kind of per retiree?
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, and so it, it varies some, of course, because of the underlying, um, plan structure, you know, that a district might have in place. Is it all contractual plans? Um, is there some higher cost, you know, plans? And then, um, kind of what people are, you know, electing. And then also, you know, it can vary based on what the actual claims experience has been. So we do look at actual claims experience, but we look at it over a number of years so that we don't start with a low-cost year or a high-cost year in our projections, because we're projecting, you know, benefits well into the future. But so the, your, the answer to your question is, my example here is pretty typical, kind of for what that hidden subsidy is kind of per month. Two fifty to, you know, four fifty, depending on a person's age. So as we age, our claims tend to increase. So I just showed you an example of a sixty-year-old here. But a sixty-four-year-old retiree might run a little more in claims, but is paying that same premium out, so they're really getting a little bit more of a hidden subsidy. But a fifty-five-year-old retiree is gonna be less in claims, paying the same premium out, getting a little less. So it, um, but for a sixty-year-old, this is kind of typical as to, yeah, what's, you know, what the difference is between that group premium rate and what they're truly running in costs or claims.
Okay, thank you.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Jill, but this is an example. This isn't actually our premium, right?
Well, again, it's a blended, it's not one of your plans, you know, premiums, but it's kind of a blend
Okay.
that we use for valuing purposes, yeah.
So Jill, earlier, it was mentioned that you guys were going to a, a strategy of migrating some of the funding going forward away from 403B into HRA, which I take to be a health reimbursement account?
Well, we, so, we, yeah, we've already done some of that. So because of the well-funded nature of your OPEB trust, um, Marcy and I have just reviewed quite a few, um, areas that, um, of other post-employment benefits that are non-OPEBs. You know, so then your general fund has to pay those when the person retires. So we've talked about if they can, if the design can be changed on those to make them an OPEB or a Gatsby seventy-five benefit, then your OPEB trust can be used to pay those benefits when they come due instead of your general fund.
Okay.
So that's what, we redesigned some of those, what we're calling Gatsby seventy-three benefits, because they were non-OPEB benefits. So they were redesigned and brought into this evaluation so that you could use the OPEB trust to pay for those benefits when they come due.
Okay, that makes sense. I was thinking of it more as a mitigation strategy for future, um, you know, the implied liabilities.
Well, we, Marcy and I have also talked about other strategies, though, to employ the OPEB trust. For example, um, there's other ways that you, you know, of, of using OPEB benefits in the future. And then the OPEB trust could be used to pay for those benefits when they come due. So we've talked about some ideas there that could be employed in the future in the arena of, you know, OPEB benefits. You know, when those come up. So yeah, if you, if you have more questions on any of that, we can kind of go through the list that, you know, we, we had talked about for ideas. In, in trying to just make sure that we fully utilize the well-funded nature of your OPEB trust, if there is a benefit that could be designed in this arena instead of paid, you know, outside of the OPEB trust.
No, that's wonderful. I just wanted a little clarity around it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Is that everything, Jill?
Yeah, so again, you know, Marcy's got the report with the full details, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, you had the highlights of this most recent study. And each study is really good for two years of disclosure results. So each report is like, um, good for two years of disclosures or a two-year cycle. So if you have any questions, though, ever in the meantime, feel free to reach out to either of us. And, um, other than that, we wanted to kind of give you an update of your good status and, um, and, you know, are always available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um, it's really great news to hear that our OPEB trust is so well-funded and should last for many years to come. So thank you for your great management.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, again, call it with any time with questions, and, um, it's nice to speak to you all this evening. So I'm glad to hear that, yeah, everything's going well at the district, and I'm glad to hear things are going in the right direction, too. So it's interesting to hear that COVID presentation before me.
Well.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you. Marcy, do you have any?
Um, I was just gonna add, you know, as for the new board members, we, we have been doing some of those, um, solutions just because we are trying to find ways to help the general fund. So anything that she suggests, we try to implement with the OPEB being so well-funded and the general fund not being so well.
Yeah, so we'll continue to, to look at that, and if any of you ever have any questions, just give us a call.
Thank you. And, uh, so any, anyone have any other questions for Marcy or? Okay, we'll now move on to the Blueprint one eighty-one project update with Damian Williams. Damian, are you online?
I am, I am. Sorry about that. I'm just trying to get my screen to share. Can everybody see my presentation?
We can.
Awesome. All right, here we go. ISD one eighty-one, Brainerd Public Schools Bond Improvements Update, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. We're gonna do project updates, and we're gonna have Scott Whitmore talk about the high school.
All right, good afternoon or evening. Uh, Grand High School, so Area Two. Uh, we're working on finishes inside the PAC lobby. As you can see from the picture there, we got the very cool-looking. As you can see from the picture there, we got the very cool looking S lights installed. Waiting our above ceiling inspection, uh, the fire treated plywood's receiving marlight paneling, uh, which is going on. This picture was last week. Uh, we've got paneling going on as of today. Uh, epoxy trazo flooring is going down. And as soon as we get our masons back from COVID quarantine, they'll be installing the brick on the fireplace chase at the bottom of the columns. Moving into the auditorium, uh, we'll be wrapping up pores here in the next two weeks. Uh, we're working on getting the framing finished so we can start applying finishes. Uh, if we get done with the rock in the lobby, the masons will move into the auditorium and start putting rock in the auditorium. And we're also going to start, uh, adhering our sheet rocks so we can start getting vinyl wall coverings installed. Uh, in two weeks from now, we've got theatrical stage rigging showing up to start installation there. And stage lighting is being installed, uh, starting February 8th. So things are progressing in there. Area 10, which is the pool, uh, putting foundations are nearing completion. In fact, our last pour is tomorrow. Uh, we'll get that poured and get ready for, uh, pre-cast to show up. Uh, next week they'll come start setting anchors and the following week they'll start setting the pre-cast panels. Area 6, which is the main corridor, uh, we just have to do our final polish of trazo and get the final signs installed. Uh, we're looking to have that area completely turned over, uh, and complete by February 16th. So February 3rd, we got aluminum jams being installed into the CTE wing. So that area is going to be really drastically changing here over the next couple of days. Area 8, which is the, uh, kind of the, uh, sports complex. Um, commons area there, uh, trazo has been polished, uh, correction, it's been sealed. Uh, we've got some small little ancillary walls that we're going to build off of some columns. And then that space will be wrapped up for, uh, the work going on for the immediate future anyways. And Area 7, uh, we're completing drywall, so we've got most of it stranded out and taped. We just need to continue our expansion south. So the structural steel, uh, has been built to the North Pool Wall. And we'll be looking to extend that CTE wing south towards the end of the existing building. Uh, this picture here, uh, in last week, concrete is complete within the auditorium itself. Uh, they're finishing up tomorrow, uh, the pour on the orchestra pit. And then it's just the stage floor left. Uh, picture on the right is the balcony, uh, I guess railing framing, uh, which was going up today, the actual railing was. And then the next page is, a picture on the left is the, uh, unpolished trazo, which they started, uh, leveling up. Wrapping that up this week. And then the area on the right is they were prepping for the trazo to be installed in the Performing Arts Center lobby. Any questions on the high school?
I thought Tom and I were going to be able to go in and put our handprints in the concrete.
Yeah, what happened?
Like, where's Waldo? Where's all my, my initials and all the concrete all over the place?
Hey Scott, just a question. I know on the oversight, we talked about the fireplace and the costs. Are we still looking at what we're going to do there?
Nope, we are not. As of oversight last week, uh, we're emitting the brows on north and south side in the auditorium. And that would bring that down to a credit.
Okay, I missed that.
But this was a different fireplace than was originally that really expensive one. This was a much less expensive option. With doing the.
That's correct.
Okay, so we did fix that. Okay.
They did, quite a long time ago, actually.
Okay. I missed that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the high school?
No, it's beautiful. I can't wait to see it.
Yeah. Thanks, Scott.
You're welcome. And South Campus, uh, we did open bids on January 21st. Uh, had really good coverage in, um, eight of the nine work scopes. Uh, the bids did not come in ideally, uh, and as a result, we will be bringing some options forward to the oversight team, uh, next week to review and, and develop a path forward. As of right now, we are not, uh, will not be moving forward with recommendations until we meet, meet with the oversight.
Yeah, and I would just like to make a, a point here. Um, I want to thank Sourcewell, um, for the really generous contribution they have made to this project. I believe it's, what, over $5 million? Yeah, it, so it's really made this a world-class project. And we just want to say our appreciation and Damian and Scott, any way that we can, uh, support, uh, Sourcewell and, um, maybe getting some contracts from them, uh, we as a school board would really appreciate that.
So.
Absolutely.
Any other questions about the South Campus? Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Scott.
Yep, thank you.
Well, today we did a, we had a, a great tour, uh, at the Warrior Early Learning Center and also at Lowell Warrior Early Learning Center. Um, we're installing the kitchen equipment, the doors and hardware are getting installed throughout. Mechanical and electrical trim out is happening. Uh, really just last few weeks of the project here, things are, things are coming together. Um, and the project, uh, is really starting to shape up, so, um, I don't know if anybody wants any, any comments you have from the tour at all or any questions?
I'd just like to say how impressive, uh, the facility is. Now, I remember it as Baxter Elementary School and all three of my children went there. And it's going to be such a great early learning center for our community. Um, what an asset. And a great job you guys are doing. Any other comments about the tour?
It was really fun to see. Yeah, it's coming along great.
It's fun to see the excitement in Tony and Cory too, isn't it? You can tell they're just so excited about their programs.
I did see the sign, the Baxter Elementary sign, at least about a week ago, is still up outside the building. Is it still there?
It is.
Was still there?
The Baxter Elementary sign? Does that cause any confusion?
Yeah, should we take that down?
Yeah, I think we should.
Okay.
If you could do that yet tonight, Damian?
I'll do it on my own.
I'm just kidding.
I have a chain in the back of the truck and everything.
And make sure you, um, give it to Tammy, uh, because she might want to do something with it.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
No, we'll, we'll definitely talk to the team about getting that, uh, taken down. That was a good comment, Charles. Uh, Garfield Elementary, we're working on the punch list, pretty much done with the first phase of the punch list. HVAC commissioning, that's, that's, uh, wrapping up and really just getting ready for next summer. Things are going well. Um, we are also finalizing the design of the gym. So we should be seeing that fairly soon here and we'll be going out for getting final pricing. So that'll be something coming up in the near future with the gym addition.
Okay.
Lowell Elementary, another site we visited, uh, countertop installation and caulking is in pro, in, in progress. Final wall covering has been installed, door hardware has been installed. Um, carpet and VCT started in the admin area, looked like it was pretty much installed when we walked through tonight. Then delivery of the fin tube radiation system. So we'll start putting those radiation, uh, covers over top of the piping in the, in the classrooms and admin space. So again, we're, you know, probably sitting in a great spot. We're going to start doing some remodeling in the existing lower level, uh, starting an early jump for next summer and, um, just, just getting prepared. We've got a lot of time to make sure we have a great plan in place, uh, and we're going to execute the plan. So, uh, team's done a really, really nice job to, to take us to this point. So, um, any thoughts or on that facility or any questions?
I just wanted to say how cool, uh, how you, um, put in the exterior wall within the interior of the new part of the building. That is really classy and I think a lot of the students that went there years ago are going to feel more part of that building.
I love it.
Adds a lot of interest.
We'll make sure we get a picture of that in one of these slides next, uh, next presentation.
Yeah.
And the great big gym too. It was just so cool to see that huge gym at Lowell. And to think Garfield will have that now too. Yeah. Beautiful.
Absolutely. Uh, Riverside Elementary, planning up for summer 2020, 2021 continues, uh, doing, in the same process, getting ready to, uh, again, getting ready to execute our plan here this, this summer. So a lot of, a lot of work's happening behind the scenes, uh, with making sure we have the materials that we need, uh, in possession and, uh, make sure we can have a good, good summer turnout. Any questions?
Um, I don't have a question, but just a comment. I had the opportunity to coach 5th grade girls' basketball, uh, part of the Brainerd Basketball Association. And last week we had the opportunity to, to practice at the Harrison School and their new gymnasium. And it was really exciting to, to, to be a part of that. The, um, the excitement, the, the laughter and the squealing as we entered the facility. And that was just my reaction and to hear the girls' excitement as well. Um, they just had a blast and as a 48-year-old man trotting up and down that court, the, the floor was really nice. I know for Reed, um, he and I visited a little bit about tha, that floor and just my thoughts or wondering about it. But, uh, just a really well-done floor as well. So sure excited to be there and the kids really enjoyed it.
That's great. That's awesome.
Damian, just a reminder, I know Bob talked a little bit about Sourcewell, but would you send me the pictures from Wald of the South Campus that I can share with the people from Sourcewell?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great. I sure appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks, Damian, and thanks for the tour today. That was really great to see the two buildings.
Yep, it was great to see everybody. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yes, you too.
Next, we'll move on to the approval, um, of the first budget revision for the 2021 budget as presented, uh, Marcy. And you should have received a packet.
So in your board packet is, um, a little bit more detail. I'm going to do the same thing as the OPEB presentation where I just breeze on through. You guys can see enough numbers tonight. Um, but if you have any questions, please just ask as I'm going through. So, uh, to start off with, we're going to talk about the 1920 audited numbers, uh, for the new board members. Last year, we ended the year in a, um, with a excess of 113, almost 114,000 in the unassigned. Um, the other categories I don't focus as much on with the board just because they are restricted. Um, the unassigned is the one that you have the most liberties with on what we can do. So I do focus on that, but if you have questions in the other areas, please do not hesitate to ask. And then Fund 2, we did end with a deficit of about 259,000 and Fund 4 a deficit of about 403,000 because of all the, um, changes we had to do with COVID. So, uh, our preliminary budget enrollment projections, we took the 1920 budget revision, which was about 6,564.5 ADMs. Uh, looks like I went too far, sorry. Jump ahead. Sorry, guys. Um, so we had a 2% increase in the Gen Ed formula and a decrease of enrollment of 73 adjusted pupil units. We had started with a smaller number, but then with COVID, we did increase it by 26, so we went up to 73. Uh, 6.3% increase in the sped reimbursement, 4.5% on the levy, a 10% decrease in Title I and II funding per, um, MDE's recommendation. That's what they were expecting to see. Known and estimated increases in employee costs with labor agreements. And then, uh, net reduction in staffing of approximately 25.63 FTE. And then any known or estimated savings we had from staff replacements or reallocation. So if somebody retired and we were going to replace it and they were, um, at a lesser value, then we would put that in there as well. So the 2019-20 revision number was 6,564.5. We took that, rolled it forward, put it in our projection model and then also looked at our kindergarten numbers and settled on this 6,492 ADMs for our preliminary budget. Once we took those numbers and all of our assumptions, we came up with this deficit of 180, almost 3,000 in the unassigned. And then it was a deficit of 38,000 in Fund 2 and 400,000 in Fund 4. Now we're looking at the first budget revision. We had an additional reduction of 260 at, at every monthly meeting. I've been giving the enrollment report. You guys are aware that we're down substantially from budget. So we did adjust it to being a decrease in enrollment of 333 pupil units. So going from that 73 to 333 is the 260 that I mentioned. And it's based on the October 1 enrollment numbers. And, um, the, we also added the updated federal and state awards. So with CARES funds, we got additional, um, we had 600,000 in there and I increased it to 1.7 just projecting out through the end of the year. We added the student activity revenue and expenses. So last year we took the student activities under our umbrella. We didn't have a budget for them. That was a transition required by the state. So this year we added budgets for those numbers, um, just based on estimates of how much we think they're going to spend and collect this year. The decrease in medical assistance, that comes from the, um, Paul Bunyan Education Co-op. They estimate how much we could be bringing in. That was about $100,000 that, that will be reduced. The increase in miscellaneous revenues, um, any large donations I do add to the budget. And then, um, we started having rebates coming in from the projects. So Blueprint 181 projects. I was telling Bob, similar to a home improvement, um, we do get rebates from Excel and, um, uh, any of those that we could get, we can capture ICS has been working on filling out those forms for us. Um, updated the salary and benefits with any, uh, settled agreements and staffing changes. And then we do add staff development, whatever carryovers from the prior year to the budget for, if they'd like to use it. And then updated the long-term facilities maintenance expense, worked with Reed on a projection for through the end of the year to get us to that point. Um, we did, I did also add the title with being cut 10%. That actually didn't happen, so we added back 275,000 for that. And then we did get the county CARES funds of about 282,000. So added that back in as well. And, um, just wanted to note that I added the 2020A bond issuance, which is in the Fund 6 or the construction funds. Marcy, does that, um, those rebates that we get from like Minnesota Power due to the building project, does that go into our general fund or? Yes. Okay. Yep. So it's, it's another source that we're trying to help out the general fund then. Okay, well, that makes sense because it's for better use of electricity. Yeah. Um, so the first revised budget enrollment projections, we are using a new, uh, budget model. As you can see, this is different than that first one I showed you. Um, we use school finances previously and now we're using Eller's model. So based on that model, it, we ended with that 6,194. And it just takes the six-year average of our October 1 count to what we ended the year. And we, it seems like our, or it shouldn't say it seems, it calculates out to 3.1% that we're debt, we lose from October 1 to the end of the year. And so we took our October 1 from this year and used that same, um, calculation to come up with how much we're estimating will be at at the end of the year. Um, this is the summary then, once we put that in, uh, the unassigned is down, up to a deficit of 1 million. Um, when we just put in the ADM change for the decrease in enrollment, the what-if actually went down 1.7 million. But with those one-time monies that I, the rebates, the title funds and the, um, uh, CARES County funds, that's why we get, it's the 1 million. So it's not as bad as what it could have been, which is good. What would it have been if? The what-if itself just changed approximately 1.7 million just based on our ADMs. And then Fund 2 and Fund 4, um, Fund 2 stayed at about 38,000 deficit and Fund Fund Two stayed at about thirty-eight thousand deficit and Fund Four stayed at pretty close to that four hundred thousand. We really didn't modify much there because there's still so many unknowns. So food service, when I give my financial report, is tracking under on food. But in speaking with the food service director, in the upcoming months, we don't know if that'll change. You know, suddenly there could be a food shortage and prices skyrocket. So we are tracking under, which is good, but we didn't want to revise the budget to less than that amount if something was to come about. And same with community ed, community ed director sent in the changes. And there, I mean, do, will we or will we not have summer programs? Who knows at this point? So there wasn't a whole lot of changes made in those two funds. The next slide is just the fund balance. So our minimum unassigned fund balance is five to seven percent. With the projected unassigned fund balance, that's about seven point two six percent, which is within our ranges. But as I always comment, the state recommends that we have at least three months for twenty-five percent. So we would like to look at that policy going forward.
And Marcy, maybe we should share what we talked about, which is we would really like to look at trying to get this fund balance more up to ten percent. This pandemic has shown us that we have to have a larger fund balance. Because what we have right now would not last this very long if we weren't getting help in CARES funds from the federal and state government. So this is something we will bring up for discussion at a later date.
That's a good idea.
Thanks for adding that. So the budget revision is up for you guys' approval. There could be a potential for a second revision if I get an updated draw schedule from ICS and it is substantially different from what I had previously. And then also if we add any new debt issuances for the projects, potentially we could get that in that second revision. Or you, it may not, we may not have one. So our first revised budget will be the starting point for looking at next year's budget. We'll take that and then put in all our assumptions and/or changes that we know of, including gen ed formula. That's, we don't know what that'll be for next year. You know, that's what the legislature is trying to work on right now. Projected change in enrollment, we have a meeting tomorrow to kind of go over what we think kindergarten will be looking at that new model. What are we most comfortable with? And the projected change in special ed and federal funds, the levy, and then also the change in employee. We're going to have to throw in some estimates in there as well.
It'll be hard to estimate kindergarten for next year.
You got it.
Any questions?
I've got just a couple of questions. And it's too late for us to react. Obviously, this is our twenty twenty revised budget, but we're anticipating about a two point seven shortfall, right? So maybe just more of a comment. It seems like, I know you had mentioned, Marcy, of, of, you know, starting to look at the twenty-one, twenty-two. But it seems like we have to really dig in pretty deep on that going into that fiscal year with a two point seven projected shortfall. And I, we've been talking for the last couple of years about reviewing the, the fund balance and, and that policy. And I really think, you know, unfortunately, it's going to be, it's going to be incredibly challenging as we go into a deficit span to also figure out how we increase that. But I, I think, you know, we have to take action on this stuff right away. I was curious on, on the seven or eight labor unions that we have. On, a couple of those are probably still in the works and we always, it seems like they're always in the works. So we have those brewing out there as well. But it just seems like, you know, it's pretty alarming to, to have a relatively low fund balance and then to be deficit spending by this, by the two point seven. So a lot of work to be done that I think in, in short order so that we have our ducks in a row before we get into late summer and in the start of next fiscal year.
There are a couple of things that are probably somewhat hopeful for next year. And that is that we have been told that there's this, there's quite a large sum of money coming to education from the federal government. We've seen a number, but it hasn't been allotted at this point. If that occurs, that could be helpful. I mean, it's got to occur because there are school districts in worse shape than we are because of what has happened with COVID and this pandemic. And we're, we're just totally counting on that, that, that something will happen. Also, today in that meeting that we were called to with the governor and, and Marcy and I are going to be on a call tomorrow. But they, you're going to hear something called the, the Due North Minnesota Education Plan. And a new plan was brought, proposed today. We're going to get more details on it tomorrow. That addresses the immediate impact of the pandemic on education because of what it's doing to schools financially, both this year and as we budget for next year, and to still build a world-class education system. Anyway, the, the plan that was proposed that we sat in on a couple of meetings today has seven basic priorities. I think I liked my notes better. The first one is that they, through this plan that's going to be outlined tomorrow, they want to meet the needs of the students during and after the pandemic and the effect that it's had. And so we're still hoping that the state and federal government will help us, will help us out. The sever, second one is to ensure that every student still receives a world-class education. The third one is to ensure that students learn in a safe and nurturing environment. The fourth one is that students learn in classrooms with caring and qualified teachers. The next one is to provide opportunities for students of color and indigenous students. The sixth priority is to expand access to opportunities for students in greater Minnesota, understanding that people that are in greater Minnesota don't have all the opportunities necessarily that some do that are in the metro area. And then also to provide a funding formula to provide a twenty-first century learning education. And I know that they've been working on this for two years, but they just outlined the seven key points today. And tomorrow, we're going to get more details on it. But I do know that, that funding is part of that. What we don't know is, we know that our state is struggling financially as well. And what is that going to mean? And so when it gets to the legislature, we don't know what that'll mean. But this was a proposal that you're going to hear, I think, a lot more about as we finish out this school year. And my hopes are that we're going to get some additional help here. And honestly, I don't know what we would have done without the help that we did get. And so, and hopefully, there's a little bit more flexibility in how we can use the dollars if we do get them so that we can, because every, every district is different and has different needs. And I hope that the, if there are some dollars, that it'll be more flexible so that we can use it to help our general fund.
So we have our work cut out for us.
We do. And again, as we're doing our budgeting for next year, if we're deficit spending by a million dollars. And there are some pieces yet that hopefully by the end of the year, that it'll turn out better than a million deficit. You know, we haven't had as many subs. You know, there's, there are some pieces that, when Marcy and I talked about it this weekend, that we might want to do another revision come later in the spring. So we have a better idea of where we are. And we'll know a little bit more about if there's any reimbursement from the state and federal government. But, but if we're deficit spending by a million dollars now and we also know that we're down at least another two hundred and sixty kids, hopefully we'll get many of those kids back. But we are not looking forward to the budgeting process this spring. We, we really need help.
Any other questions?
Comments?
We're going to be starting those meetings second week in February because we're going to be lining those up with principals, so. And directors.
Could entertain a motion for the approval of this first budget revision.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Shogren, second by Director Blacklance for the approval of the first budget revision for the twenty twenty-one budget as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Marcy. We then have, the next item of business is the approval of the request for proposals, RFP for transportation services as presented.
All right. So in your board packet is what we worked on. I spent some time with our legal counsel on putting this together. We did an invitation for quotes the spring of two thousand seventeen. There was a two-year contract executed with a follow-up two-year contract, so we're kind of due for this. The RFP is requesting pricing for two years with a potential two-year extension. Some of the changes that we made from the specs in two thousand seventeen include changing the invoicing structure. The current contract is ten payments divided out. We'd like to change it to where they're invoicing us for actual, what their actual work is being done. There's no prepay or anything like that. And then also there was some language that legal recommended. They've seen in some of the other contracts where there's a reserve deduct for non-performance. And if they perform, they get all the money in the end, but it is in there just to safeguard you.
And when you're talking about that, you're talking about if there are enough drivers, for instance, to cover all the roads and if they're able to cover the needs of the district.
Yeah, there's all sorts of things in there for, or a couple line items for non-performance. And that's, you know, I could bore you with more details, but it's all in there, so.
That was a really fun read.
People are bad.
So I, I think the, the due date on that was the twenty-sixth of February?
Yes.
That they were to be in, okay.
Yeah, we were, with how much is in here, we didn't want to short our contractors. You know, we didn't, we wanted them to be able to have time to put something together. So we'll get those RFPs back, review them. If we can come up with something to present to the board, we'll present that to you guys and then execute the contract.
And that would be in March?
That, that's our hope.
Okay.
I would move to approve and move forward with the RFP for transportation services as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Heglin, second by Director Blacklance for the approval of the RFP for transportation services as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item thirteen. This is the approval for the second and final reading of MSBA Policy Two Thirteen, School Board Committees as Presented. Superintendent Larson.
Yep, and this is the information that we brought forward at the last meeting, that we just changed the word insurance from, I believe it was lead, you know, it was.
Legislative?
Legislative, thank you. Yeah, and we changed it to insurance because we wanted to have our eyes on that. And fortunately, Director Boils is willing to help us with that and did a really nice job at the last meeting with the insurance. And so I would recommend that we approve this, so.
Thank you.
I move to approve the second and final reading of the MSBA Policy Number One, or Two One Three, School Board Committees as Presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Blacklance and a second by Director Nelson for the approval of the second reading of Policy Two Thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen is for the approval of the process and timeline for naming the Regional Performing Arts Center that was voter-approved in the April tenth, two thousand eighteen bond referendum. Corey Reynolds and Superintendent will make a presentation.
Good evening. What you see here is the graphical representation of the process we are proposing. It follows Policy Five Sixty on naming facilities. It starts with a call for submissions that would begin as early as tomorrow and go be open for two weeks. So we would invite the community to give us their ideas and a rationale for why they think that idea captures the warrior spirit. Then we will pull together a task force to narrow down those submissions to the top three that the school board would be presented. It says voting results, that shouldn't be there. So the board would be presented with the top three names that the task force comes up with from the community submissions and the board would adopt a name at your second meeting in February. This is just a list of where we intend to put the information to sort of, to throw it out there for people to submit ideas, do a press release in the morning. It usually is picked up and read on our local radio stations. We'll use our district websites. We're planning to reach out to all the performing arts teachers across the district so that, so that they might share the information with their students. We worked with a number of community performing arts organizations. When we were working on the referendum, we'll make sure those people have this information as well, as well as the other people who use our performing arts spaces. And we've got social media, the Blueprint One Eighty-One website. We like to put ads like this in the Chamber of Commerce's email and our own staff newsletter, as well as sending it out to families in the district. Those are our plans at, at this point.
Any questions?
Something fun?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I would really like to challenge the ISD One Eighty-One community to put their thinking hats on for this name. This is a very important decision as the name of this performing arts center will be in perpetuity. And it is such an asset in our community. I mean, it's just a gem. The, the fact that this community supported, you know, the add-on to make this the performing arts center that it is. We really want to have a name that stands out and will be multi-generational. So please, if, you know, we really need your input.
And when we get done with this, we'll do South Campus, huh? So that'll be fun. So I agree with you. Let's get lots of names and be really creative. So what does that mean?
And maybe some people already have a thought for a name. Maybe some board members have some thoughts.
I had Boyle Center for Performing Arts.
Oh, that's nice.
That was, but that was, you know, after a return to the stage at CLC after thirty-year hiatus. I might be getting a little bit for my britches.
I love it.
Yeah.
The link to submit ideas, such as that fine one just thrown out there, will be on blueprintoneeightyone.org in the morning.
Perfect.
Okay.
Speaking of that, though, are there any parameters that the community needs to be aware of? Are there any, will that be published, too?
They're embedded in the form.
Do people kind of know what may or may not be off limits?
Yes, yep. And those, those guidelines are taken right from that Policy Five Sixty.
Great, great. If you're ready, I'll make a motion that we approve the process for naming the Performing Arts Center.
Very good.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Shogren, seconded by Director Blacklance to approve this process for naming the Performing Arts Center. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Corey. Next, we move on to the approval of the MSBA One Hundred series of school board Next, we move on to the approval of the MSBA 100 series of school board policies as presented with no changes. Would you like to address that?
I'd be happy to. The policies put before you are six policies in our 100 section. And as we referred to MSBA, there have been no changes since the last time. It's kind of redundant because last week at the organizational meeting, you voted to re-approve all the, all of the policies as written. And so you're kind of taking these six policies and approving them again, but it's just to change the date and say, yes, we, we approved them and on our three-year rotation that we've addressed these policies. So what we would recommend is that we just re-approve them and we'll move on to the next policies and be bringing those forward at each board meeting as we move forward to keep them current.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the MSBA 100 series of school board policies as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Director Boyle, second by Director Nelson to approve the MSBA 100 series of school board policies as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will move on to informational. And first up is Equity Task Force Update, Director Blacklance.
Thank you, Chair. Nice jump. Lane, just a quick question here. Would you like me to, to read the biographies or just reference them?
Just, you can just reference them if you want to. Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'm excited to be part of the equity, ISD 181 Equity Task Advisory Task Force that, that met last week. And this is one of many meetings we've had already, and my opportunity to share that, a quick update with all of you for what we've been working on. And some of the, the main areas that we've been working on this last meeting was completing the definitions of equity, diversity, and inclusivity for the, for the, for the committee. And the committee, as I'll mention later, is a pretty large group. So to be able to put this number of people together with a vast amount of experience, but even more importantly, a vast amount of ways to view the world. And so this was a significant process that we went through and, and a clear and concise process, process as well. And so to come up with those three definitions and come to a, and come to an equal footing in that area was pretty significant, so I'm very pleased to have gotten there. And very important as we move forward with the trajectory of this particular committee. And then also, we began working on identifying the best possible outcomes for this, for this task forces as well. And, and that's really going to be the, the proof in the pudding once we get that all laid out in terms of where are we really headed. Again, continuing to find that, that trajectory of this particular group. So some of you might be wondering who's, who makes up this task force, so I'll share with you the names here real quick. And they are community members, Mary Sam. She, she is actually the Dean of Equity and Inclusion and Collaboration at Central Lakes College. Martha Rusted. And then we have Will Riley. We have myself, Charles Blacklance. We have student members that are Kate Henke, Henke, Doug Clark. And then we also have staff members, Erin Carlgaard, Tracy Riley, Amy Aho, Sheila Eller, John Anderson, Tim Murtha, Heidi Han, and Lane Larson. So it's been a very effective group. Most people have been able to meet pretty consistently, which is, really says something about the importance of this group and how valuable this, this time and effort has been by us as a committee. So thank you for that.
Director Blacklance, do you feel that the task force represents diversity well with the members that are, that you have on the task force?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, yeah, I'm into, yeah, to answer your question, does it represent diversity? That's actually one, one of the definitions that we went over. I'm just going to read that with you, I think that might be helpful.
That would be good.
The diversity is a variety of lived experiences, values, and worldviews that arise from differences of culture, heritage, identity, and circumstance. So to answer your question, Bob, absolutely. I feel there, there, there's definitely in the Brainerd Lakes area a, a great deal more diversity than one might realize. And I think that's one of the things we want to unpack with this committee is to, is to be able to demonstrate that and share that with our community down the road is, there's a lot of diversity right here. So there's a lot of wealth of that diversity. If I can just take a quick moment, since we're on it, I'll share with you what we came up with for equity and then also inclusivity, which is one of the, the following of the three things we worked on. Equity is the promise of fair treatment, access to resources, opportunity, and advancement for all students and staff while at the same time striving to identify and eliminate barriers that have prevented the full participation of underrepresented groups and to provide the resources and support to ensure they are prepared for the world around us. So equity is really, when you look at it, is really an outcome aspect of, of certain endeavors, especially academically speaking. Final one is inclusivity, which is the creation of systems, structures, and environments in which we, any individual or group feels welcomed, respected, supported, and valued. A climate which embraces differences and others, or I'm sorry, and offers respect in words and actions so that each individual can fully participate in the community. Inclusivity is really important, and you've probably heard me mention it a few times around this, around this board table, is it's really important that we provide as a school district a soft landing spot for all students. And the way that we can, we can get there effectively is to really understand and move forward with that whole area of inclusivity. So I think these are three areas that are really important for this committee to sit down, talk about, chat about, share experiences, make sure we're all on the same page, and then come up with these definitions that'll allow us to, to really pull together in the same direction.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you for your report. Next, we'll have a curriculum update from Director Murtha.
Good evening. I won't take much of your time. I just wanted to bring you a update on the online school application that you approved that we submitted to MDE a month or two ago. We've had our review meeting, it was last Friday, with Ms. Lungren, Ms. Rusk, Ms. Anderson from the district, myself, Ms. Han, and then representatives of the Minnesota Department of Education. When we met with MDE regarding the application, they were very excited about it. They had some clarifying questions, which is normal for this point of the process. We were able to provide fairly comprehensive responses to the questions, and so they feel no need to ask us to resubmit a re-edited application, but just to address some of those questions in writing and submit as an addendum, which we'll do this week. The points, the two primary issues requiring clarification were on how the district would ensure due process and appropriates for special education students and also to reinforce our commitment to the standards and making sure that we're preserving rigor when we're offering similar courses in our course catalog for meeting a requirement, core graduation requirement. So if it's online, it has the same rigor as it would have in person, but also at the same time balancing with enough flexibility to allow the online teachers to leverage what the online platform allows them. So that balance between flexibility and rigor is what they wanted some clarification on. And we were able to do that by walking through what we use as our curriculum process, which you all very well familiar with. And they were very pleased with that process and felt it set us up for success. So we'll submit the addendum at the end of this week. I'm hoping that by the next time we meet next month, that as a, next time the board meets next month, that should have good news and the application should be approved. That's the stretch, Paul.
Super. Any questions?
That's impressive, that you don't have to redo the application and just add an addendum. Good work.
Well, the, the credit here goes to Christina Lungren and her team at the high school. They worked very hard, they did immense amount of research. They burnt a lot of hours over the summer putting this together. That team deserves the credit.
Thanks for your, all your hard work, Tim, and your team. We appreciate it.
Well.
Anything else you had to present?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your report. Next, we move on to Business Services Report, Marcy Lord.
Getting your steps in, Paige.
Yes. I'm hoping she's coming with better news.
Yeah.
Lane. In your board packet is the financial report. Nothing really new to note from previous month. I just was going to note that next month's report will have the revised budget in January, so. There's also the CARE summary in there. I thought you guys would be interested to see how much, or what we spent, ended up spending all the final dollars on the CRF funds. So that's the 1.721, 755.61 dollars. And the majority of it was spent on technology, online software, some payroll, the staffing, COVID coordinator, secretary, technology administrator. And another chunk of it was the auto scrubbers. I don't know if we actually have one in this building, the run themselves, and then the thumbprint tables, and then the last chunk of it, 180,000, was supplies. So distance learning supplies, supplies for separating materials, all of that. And then in the budget revision tonight, you know, I said I added 1.1. It is the CRF funds, the Gears and Esser, there is that potential allocation of a second round that's nowhere in the budget as of right now, just because we don't know how much we're going to get and/or what we can use it on. So as of right now, these are the known dollars that we have. Any questions?
Do you know how many, it says we had about, what, 200, 282,000 for the Chromebooks? Do you know how many Chromebooks that were again? I know that we, we covered this.
I want to say a thousand.
Thousand?
Between the two, but I could double check with Sarah.
Oh, that's impressive.
It might be even more than that. 6,700 kids, it might be, yeah, I don't remember either. Marcy, you made a good point, though, because like you said, there might be a second round of CARE's funding. We don't, and we don't know if it would, would go towards this school year or towards next school year, so. We're, you know, we're just being cautious right now, to be perfectly honest, as we learn more.
Yeah, and if the second round comes with a similar deadline as the CRF funds, then we'll probably put that as a priority rather than the GEAR and the Esser. But for right now, we're using GEAR and Esser dollars, and I can re-code those as quickly as, you know, needed if we find out that there is another short deadline on these new funds.
Yeah. And I know one of the things that we did, that I talked to MDE about, is that if we do receive some of these funds, because they go federally to the state and then they come to districts, that we just need more flexibility because we get told how you can use the dollars. And like I said earlier, we just, we just need a little bit of flexibility because our needs might be different than what another school district's needs are, so. And somebody did tell me, I believe it was the deputy commissioner, who said there will be some more opportunity to put it towards staffing and substitutes and health benefits if, if you had a lot of substitutes who were in and such, in place as some of our teachers, or you needed to hire additional teachers for the distance learning and those kinds of things, whereas before, many of those things weren't, we weren't able to use those dollars for. You know, one of the bright spots that you told me too this weekend that I do think that we should share with the board that I didn't think about has to do with when we did do our budget projections as far as staffing. Why don't you share that? Because I think that that's a piece of good news worth talking about.
I, since I've been in this role, whenever we go through the process and we make our cuts, and then at revision time, I do that staffing in the report of, okay, reconciliation, this is what we were projected, and now at revision time, this is what we have for staffing. And I probably should have said during that presentation that that is a snapshot of time. You know, things are always changing. You guys probably approved a position tonight that's not in the first budget revision, but that's, it's just a snapshot in time. But for that snapshot, we actually, when you totaled all the FTEs, we were flat. We didn't add more or we didn't decrease, which I have not seen since I've been here. Most of the time, we end up adding some positions throughout the year and we're up higher than what we had projected. So it was, it was just, I know that people are struggling and everything, but that number could have been way worse had we done what we had done in the past. And then also, when you look at, if we had added 1.7 million to that unassigned number because we didn't get federal dollars, we would be sitting in a way rougher spot as well. So it's not a great number, but it could have been a lot worse.
Yeah. We can weather this, we can figure this out.
Yeah, I know in my little corner of the professional world, there's a certain amount in my life having to document the use and whatnot of the CARE dollars. So I certainly appreciate the effort that the school district and yourself, that it took to, to put into documenting and then tracking all those dollars, on top of what you already would do in a, in a non-COVID year. So I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
So who's putting the earmarks on? Is that coming from the feds or from the state when they, when they're limiting where that money can be used and can't be used today?
If it's federal dollars, then it comes from the feds.
Okay, so the strings are a test.
And if it's state dollars, then it's from the state, yeah. But it looks like if there is a second round of CAREs, like there might be a little bit more flexibility that could really help us. Thanks, Marcy.
Thanks, Marcy. Next, we'll go to our superintendent's report, Lane Larson.
All right, I am. We've talked about a lot of the items that I had on here, but just a few highlights. Tomorrow, we have a calendar meeting where we're going to look at next year's calendar and talk about that, we're hoping, and it looks like we're going to be able to go back to the old calendar with the similar number of days and stuff. And so we've worked with ICS and means that we're getting to the end of our building project if we don't have to accommodate for the summer programs where you need extra time in, in May and, and again in August. So that's really exciting. Again, our students are going to return. Our third through fifth grade students, LEC, BLC, Transitions and Stars kids are going to return on the first. And some of you have signed up to be at the schools, and so I'm just going to go through your names real quick, but please, all board members feel that you can be at any of the buildings. Charles at Baxter, Kevin has signed up for Garfield, Bob at Riverside, and Ruth at Forestview. And about 7:45-ish, somewhere around there, just to greet the kids on the first of February. Also, the following week, you'll be able to pick up your party in a box for the Brainerd Public School Foundation. Bob and I had a great meeting with Jenny and Jessica regarding the foundation this past week, and that was fun to meet with them. And the big event is going to be on February 6, beginning at 7 o'clock, and that's virtual, and should be a really fun, fun activity. A lot of, lot of silent action items going through the, the building right now, so it's really fun to see what's going to be on there. Also, the fifth, I'll have a letter again that will update parents so they know exactly what's going on for the return of sixth through 12th graders on the 16th of February. And then we did talk about that we'll have a tour of the BHS and the Performing Arts Center at, before the February 8 meeting. And on our tour today, we decided that we're going to have a tour of Baxter Elementary in Harrison on February 22nd. For the new board members who haven't had a chance to get into those buildings or, or somebody else hasn't gotten in there, we'll go to those two buildings that, that night as well. The last thing that I want to end with tonight is that today, when we had that special meeting at 8 o'clock, and then it was the announcement regarding the Dune North Minnesota's Public Education Plan that came out at 2 o'clock, all of us that were sitting watching to see what this big announcement was going to be, we left there feeling really good. And the reason that we felt really great is because everything that were in these initiatives that the governor was saying that schools need to do to stay progressive and to stay on top of it. that the governor was saying that schools need to do to stay progressive and to stay on top of it are things that we are already leading the charge on and believing ourselves that are important. When they talk about equity for all learners, look at the work that's, that's been done because of the commitment by the Board of Education last summer. And look at the amount of work that's going on and how exciting that work is. Um, the career and technical education and workforce development, they talked in great detail about that we need to put a lot more emphasis on that. We need to put more emphasis on Greater Minnesota. And he talked specifically about manufacturing and industry and provide, and having our kids have those opportunities. They talked about special education. They talked about that world-class education and everything that are goals that we're already working on. And so I think it was really reaffirming to hear that, that that's the initiative as we're moving forward. Um, hopefully, along with some of these initiatives that we're already implementing, that there'll be some support and resources that will help us with these initiatives so we can really do the work that we're fully intending to do. And so, you know, clearly, none of us feel good about where the budget, uh, was tonight. It's nobody's fault. It's just what happened with this pandemic. But we are doing great things in Brainerd. And our focus is in the right areas. And when these kinds of initiatives come out and say, check, we're doing that, yep, we're working on that, yep, we're working on that. You can feel a great sense of pride in the leadership that all of you are leading, that our administrative teams, our teachers, all of the, uh, families that are supporting us in our community that we're moving towards, and, and it's all on behalf of our great kids. And so I, I hope that you, you can leave here today that we're going to get through this. And it's going to be okay, and, uh, we're going in the right direction, and we need to be really proud of that. That's the end of my report.
And if I may add to that, you know, we've been through a lot with this pandemic, and I want to thank you for the leadership that you have done.
It's everybody, though. Yeah, it's everybody.
But they follow because of the empathy, the compassion, and the commitment that you have towards this whole process. And it shows in the response that we've done and how the committee, or the community, um, has bought into what we're doing here. Because it's tough. It's tough to be down over three hundred students. But we're going to get through this. You know, it may be next year, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you're right, our community has been great, you know. There are so many, like, kind emails and things that people say, you know, we kind of dwell on the negative ones sometimes, but there's a lot of really good going on. And you can tell it's, it's a great community partnership right now. We'll get through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that wraps up the reports. Um, you can see what's left on future meetings. Our next regularly scheduled School Board Meeting is February eighth. And we're going to do, um, an optional tour of Brainerd High School and the Performing Arts Center. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, okay, we have a motion by Director Nelson, seconded by Director Blacklance to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion adjourned, or, meeting adjourned.
I toyed with an, an nay there just to make you hold off on the hammer.
I was a little.